Here we go. Welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of the 23rd of April 2018. Let us all rise for a pledge of allegiance followed by a period of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with L.B. 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of this chamber. The order of the business of the city council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating name, address, and whether you're speaking in favor or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited, five minutes per speaker. After each public hearing section, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last meetings of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue, not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. Will the clerk please call the first item?
Yes, and we would ask those giving testimony to please clearly state your name and address and to sign in on the sign-in sheet laying on the podium. Our first item of business is our public hearing consent agenda, items 1A through 2C.
Would anyone like to speak on any of these items? Seeing none?
All right, if not, we can vote on these items. 1A and 2A were introduced by Gaylor Baird.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Larry and seconded by Carl. Discussion, please call the roll.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next then are our public hearing liquor resolutions. Those giving testimony are asked to come forward, raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses. I'll call item 3A, manager application of Doug Ditman for the Hub Cafe at 250 North 21st Street. Doug, just right up here, use your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you are about to give is the truth as you rarely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you. Just state your name and address.
My name is Doug Ditman, 17015 Northwest 70th Street, Raymond, Nebraska, 68428.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm applying, sorry.
Go ahead and tell us about your application, Doug.
Okay, I have Hub Cafe at 250 North 21st Street, a farm-to-table restaurant, and I'm applying as the manager for liquor sales at Hub Cafe. We're open breakfast and lunch, and so we have some, just a few local beers and a small wine selection.
Okay, questions? Cindy?
Thanks for being here today, I appreciate it. So I saw that you were going to be taking that class on April 12th. Did you complete the class okay? Were you able to make it?
I did, yes.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, sir. Please sign in, and we'll call the next item.
Next then is item 3B, application of global warming for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 160 feet by 75 feet at the mill at Telegraph at 330 South 21st Street on May 9th between 4:00 p.m. and 10:00 p.m.
Hi, I'm Dan Sloan, I'm with the mill, and this is an application for our newest location at 21st and Capitol Parkway. It's a terrific facility, if you haven't been there, and Tamara's put together the event, so I'm going to let her give you most of the details on that.
Hi, I'm Tamara Sloan, 405 South 28th Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, and the application, yep, is for our Telegraph location. We have a great outdoor space, and we'd like to use that. It was set up by Speedway as they built out the space to be kind of a mini entertainment district with all the Nellnet and ALO employees and folks that pass by and are regular, people that are getting to be regular customers. We just want to put some low-key music there, the idea is to use some local groups. We've got actually, it's a band that's, he's a, has a, is an employee of ALO who has a small band, and actually Brad Mullin's going to sit in as the drummer for this first one. We will be serving food, so that will be our focus. We're actually bringing in a gal who is a Engler entrepreneurship student, and she runs a beef farm, and so she will be furnishing her beef for this event. We're just going to do Juicy Lucy's, so we'll have the grill out. So we'll always be, we're going to do a number of these events, working with Spencer Munson, Lincoln Calling, to be able to do the bands and the sound, to put that together. So it's going to be a highly professional event, but of course, very family-friendly. So it's kind of a stage, it doesn't after-work, start at 5, go till about 8, so I've put it from 4 to 10 to give us some leeway, of course, but we've definitely planned on being done, musical end by 8, and so should be pretty low-key, very local, and very fun for the neighborhood families.
Excellent. Any questions? Carl?
Yes, thank you. So this is the space on the south side of the building?
Yep, the after space, exactly.
Okay, and I'm trying to remember, is there a fence there now?
There's not. They're actually installing post holes, so we'll be able to go ahead and drop fencing in for each of these.
Okay.
That will be, we're using Pink Gorilla, right, for this first event, because they have the fencing, to be able to put that in, and so it'll be double fenced, basically, as it is. So we've got a low wall, but we'll fence beyond that.
And what you're requesting here is a special designated license?
Correct.
Why aren't you trying to get the whole area licensed as part of your liquor license? I'm just curious about that.
Um, there, well, we don't have it permanently fenced, so that we don't have, and then we'll also be, Subway is going to be moving in one of the spaces that we've got at their storefronts, it'll be incorporated.
Yeah, there's other tenants that face onto that.
And so, you know, we've got our, I don't know why I have to try to control the whole thing.
That's good.
But, yeah, so, you know, as a, as that occasional event space, but we plan to do 10 to 12 other events out there that Spencer's working on for the rest of summer, all the way leading up to Lincoln Calling would be the night before Lincoln Calling would be our final event for the season, and so he's actually just emailed me earlier with bands he's already contacted for us, and like the Wildwoods and, you know, some of those fun local bands.
Great, thank you.
John?
Just for clarification, our summary here talks about May 9th and then 4:00 and 10:00 p.m. On what date? What are the two dates you're asking for?
This one, just May 9th. Just this one, yep.
Yep, we'll come back for any of the future stuff once we get that nailed down.
Yep, we're trying to kind of go through this first one, make sure everything goes really smoothly, you know, iron out any of the little issues that might come up. We want to make sure we've got the entrances all appropriately, and people banded, and, you know, we want to make sure, we don't, we don't like to do things wrong, we like to do them right, so we want to make sure it goes well.
What do you anticipate your capacity?
Um, I'm thinking with the ALO employees, we'll probably get 200 people, so in and out, kind of pass through.
Larry?
And just, I know since you're very on top of this, maybe this isn't even something that needs to be stated out loud, but SDLs, there's only a certain maximum per year, so if you're doing 12 and then Lincoln Calling, you might want to check with the clerk about making sure you don't exceed the limit, but, but also, just as I read in the staff report, you calling this a beer and sliders event, it's public, right? You want to, okay, so anyone, not just the employees?
Right.
Right. We feel like we have a built-in
Audience there.
Audience there, so we're going to leverage off that as much as possible to get the ball rolling.
Initial success.
You know, with the ball fields just east of us, we get a lot of the families in anyway, so we'd really like to, we've, we've just gotten such terrific community support for that location. That really apparently struck a nerve with that area. I haven't had a situation anytime recently where so many people simply came up and thanked us for investing in the neighborhood and for really believing in that area and giving them the kind of amenities that they really need to make that kind of more home.
Okay, thank you very much. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
All right, next is item 3C, application of Freesh Inc. for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 460 feet by 435 feet at the Abbott Sports Complex at 7600 North 70th Street on May 19th between 3:00 p.m. and 1:00 a.m.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
No oath on this deal.
So just tell us about what's going on here?
Uh, we would like to be the caterer who provides liquor for the Bug Eaters Games out at the Abbott Sports Complex.
Okay, questions? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item?
Mr. Chair, I would move approval of items 3A, B, and C.
Second.
I have moved approval of items 3A, 3B, and 3C, and my colleague Cindy Lamb has seconded it.
Discussion, please call the roll.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next then are our public hearing resolutions. Item 4A is approving a construction engineering services agreement between the city and Alfred Benish and Company to provide construction and engineering services for the 66th Street and Fremont Street intersection safety project.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Craig Aldrich, Public Works Engineering Services, here to ask for approval of the resolution to approve this funding agreement for construction management and inspection services on the 66th and Fremont Safety Project. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are there questions for Craig? Cindy?
Craig, hi. Thanks for coming.
You bet.
So I know that we ran into a couple little minor glitches while this has been going on, as far as community members up in that area that maybe didn't know about this particular project, and, and I want to just express my appreciation for you folks going out and meeting with those, the community partners, and I may not have been you, but I think that the residents out there feel a lot more comfortable about this, so I appreciate that. Is there anything else that you'd like to tell us, special about the process or your experience out there in the northeast Lincoln?
I don't think so. Part of that outreach that will still be ongoing, part of the funding in this agreement is actually some funds set aside for consultant Alfred Benish to help us conduct a pre-construction open house. That will be coming up sometime probably in May. We don't have the date or the time or the location set for that yet, but it'll be sometime in May. It'll be a chance for members of city staff and the contractor to meet with residents in the area of northeast Lincoln, to basically explain the project, talk timeframes, talk how this is really going to impact them and their daily commutes and their lives, and so it'll be another way for us to, to provide that outreach and disseminate knowledge to the folks up there in that area town. Other than that, I'll give you a few dates as far as construction and what to expect. Tentatively planning on June 4th for the start of construction on this project. Substantial completion will be August 12th of this year, final completion September 8th. Substantial completion, just to give you a heads-up, is basically everything but final turf establishment, and we take another month to get all the seating and sodding done and get everything cleaned up. Basically open to traffic by middle of August. Other than that, I don't know that I have anything extra.
Larry?
Would you like to tell everyone the cost split that we share with the federal government on this, so the local impact?
Yes, on this particular funding agreement, it's an 80/20 cost split, 80% federally funded, 20% locally funded.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, other questions? Thank you very much, Craig.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
All right, next is item 4B, comprehensive plan conformance 18007, approving an amendment to the Lincoln Center redevelopment plan to add the Raymond Brothers Redevelopment Project, generally located at 801O Street. The project involves the redevelopment and rehabilitation of the existing four-story Raymond Brothers Building.
Members of the city council, David Landis, Urban Development Department, the applicant in this case, this is the second of three steps in hopefully approving an ultimate city and developer agreement to rehabilitate one of the oldest buildings in the city of Lincoln. It's a building that's been largely unused for more than a decade, and it is in significant disrepair, but we have a developer who's just had a success across the street with the creation of the residential units on the other side of 8th Street, who says, "One down, let's do it again." And the hope is to create a first floor of commercial space and three floors of housing. This is the existing Raymond Brothers Building, previously called the Kiner Building, and today is an amendment to our downtown plan for this area, the shaded area. This is the building, and then this is the right-of-way that surrounds it in the next block. We're hoping that we create an assessed valuation growth of about $5.5 million, and that'll come from an investment by the private sector in about $8 million. That should generate about $900,000 of TIF, so we're ultimately looking to see, in the event you give us permission, to move towards an agreement towards that end. About 21 units above, about 9,500 square feet of commercial space on the first floor, and that's what you want in a downtown area, an active first floor. The project has gone to the Historic Preservation Group so far on a limited basis. Some of the design elements, for example, the windows, the question was, are our plans consistent with historical standards? And the answer was yes. We would anticipate that they will go back again when the process is further along and the design can be shown to the Historic Preservation. Folks, there are three plans that govern this area. One is the downtown master plan, one is the comprehensive plan, and one is the South Hay Market Neighborhood Plan, and the planning department tells us that this project would fit all three of them. I think your fact sheet would support that as it breaks up various parts of those plans and enumerates the way in which this project would fulfill plan objectives. So we would ask for an amendment to our downtown plan to make a soft landing for this project on the Raymond Brothers Building. The developers here are happy to answer questions, as will I.
Questions for Mr. Landis? Larry?
Maybe for the developer as well, I just, what's the intended plan for type of housing, affordability, et cetera? What's the, what's the target, do you know?
I think we're talking about condos, as I recall, and in this area, the condos have been, they're certainly not low-cost, there are, there's very little low-cost housing in the downtown area. I think you should call it medium to higher-end, not as luxurious as some of the other projected housing locations in downtown Lincoln, but it's, some of the condos across the street have been in the area of $300,000, as I recall, so that may be, that may be the target here, but let me ask the developer to speak about that. It is proprietary information, but I don't know that they would be unwilling to share that with you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Okay, here we go.
All right.
Wait, wait, he's coming.
Good afternoon, Kent Seacrest, representing BIC Construction LLC. The developer was supposed to be here, but he's running late, so I will do my best to try to answer your question. David did a great job of posing the parameters of the price. These are proposed to be condominium units for the downtown West Hay Market area, and this is probably one of the oldest, not the oldest, but one of the oldest buildings, and it is in serious disrepair. Holes in the roof, and water has gotten in there, and it will take a major push to get, but it's a very important building, if you can picture it on the south side of the O Street viaduct, and with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Perhaps you can talk about the price of the condos, but are they like one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom?
Again, I'm not the designer, but across the street, we did, I think, one-bedroom, mostly two-bedroom, and we might have done a three-bedroom, one or two, but it's generally the two-bedroom range.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item? And we can go ahead and vote on these items.
All right, item 4A was introduced by Eskridge?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Carl, seconded by Jane. Discussion, please call the roll.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 4B was introduced by Eskridge?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Carl, seconded by Jane. Discussion, please call the roll.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
I think I'll abstain because I own some adjacent property to this.
Okay. Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Next then are our public hearing ordinances, second reading. I'll call items 5A through 5C together. They're all involving the Telegraph District Phase 2 redevelopment agreement, authorizing and appropriating $8,907,652,000 in TIF funds, and authorizing the issuance of tax allocation bonds.
Members of the city council, David Landis, Urban Development Department, applicant. This is the sixth time that the city council has seen the Telegraph District idea in Phase 1 and now Phase 2. You have been lockstep with us and the administration and the developer in moving towards a new neighborhood in downtown Lincoln. There is a couple, there are a couple of unique features about this, and one of those features that I particularly want to call attention to is something that the developer did in this case, which is not common. In fact, there's only one other example in this history of Lincoln that I know of. When we created the West Hay Market Neighborhood, we asked that there be an integrated design plan that elements could then be measured against for how consistent they were, and we asked John Sinclair of Sinclair Hilli to draw up that integrated master plan. We have very little history of using this idea generally. The developer, at their own cost, chose to do the same thing and got the nationally, and I think it's fair to say internationally-known firm of Papa George, to do that same thing. So what has guided this process for these last two and a half years are the design elements that Papa George came up with in their looking at this whole area, and the suggestions that they made to the developer and for which the developer took very serious in their design. I don't know if you ever have been in some of the buildings that are there now. This is one of the buildings that will come down. It's the inside of the Fisher Foods Building. It has a distinctive odor, as you might imagine, and this, this isn't the worst of the worst. I'm not sure I have a photograph of the worst of the worst, but you know, it's just pretty darn bad. Community redevelopment law is aimed at taking down buildings like this and replacing them with buildings like this. This is the back end of one of the other areas as well. This area is rife with these kinds of existing elements to our city, and in return, what we get out of this project is about $63 million of private investment and about nine and change million dollars of TIF increment financing to adjust and create not just the two buildings that you have approved, one of which is already completed, the Nellnet Building, the other one that's still being finished, for which, by the way, you had the mill come up and say we'd like to use our new mill for that, but across the street are the larger portions of the project. Include four buildings and then two outline structures. The preferred locations for construction is Telegraph Lofts East, that is a very significant part of the project, and a matching building, if at all possible, to have a very similar footprint and a very similar look, so that they would have a very powerful visual effect as you came into the neighborhood. These buildings look like this. Imagine the photographs that we have and the photographs of what we hope to have. This is the second of those two buildings. There is, on the other hand, the possibility, since not all the land has been acquired, to do one of the two buildings, that we won't be able to do this building, because it's on private property now owned by another property owner. There are conversations going on, and they hope to continue, and successfully we'll have the book-in building. If they're unsuccessful, then the second structure will be to the south in land controlled by the developer. The third building is this large set of lofts where the Fisher Foods Building is, and two outline structures, the Towel Building and the power plant. The power plant is to have community services and amenities, and the others to have a couple of units. We're talking a total of about 200 housing units and commercial space in all of these buildings. The fourth of the four buildings is on O Street. As you drive down O Street today, you see it as Awards Unlimited. It will have commercial space on the first floor and artist studios, and it will have about eight housing units above it. That too will be all part of this neighborhood, if you will. The city maintains control of the unit, of the Muni Building. Streetscape maintenance, well, we begin with the obligation falling on the developer, although the ultimate end game is to have a business improvement district of some kind in the area. The money that we are asking to put into the project from the TIF proceeds are spent for a variety of things. They appear in your handout as page 145, in the longest redevelopment agreement that's ever been written or, should it be passed, agreed to in the city. The first things that we use the money for is for a bond attorney, capitalized interest and the 1% fee for administration costs, and then you'll see that there's a city property acquisition of $1,550,000, $1,550,000, 155000. That is largely recovery costs for things that the city has done. For example, we obtained offsetting parkland in the Stevens Creek area. We moved a couple of structures. So this essentially recovers for the city the costs that we will have essentially in allowing this to go forward. The valuation of the square footage is one of two kinds. If it's commercial, the valuations that we use to average $11.83 a square foot, and for those parts of the land that we are selling, which are unbuildable but will be used for a right-of-way or the like, that is at 10%, because it's unbuildable land. So those are the numbers that dictate the, essentially the purchase price, and the TIF proceeds will in fact reimburse the city for the acquisition of the land that we are selling to the developer. There's $1 million of facade enhancement, there's a considerable amount of streetscape, roads, and parking. We're moving curbs, we're creating angled parking, and we're also doing significant streetscape as dictated by the Papa George design. We have utilities and property acquisition, in which the property acquisition were from private owners, not the city, and then a contingency of 5%. The total amount of that is $9,250,000. We think the available proceeds will be about $8,900,000, guessing as to what the appraised value will move to once the project is completed. The developer is here, they've had a very significant hand in this, I can tell you, the Urban Design Committee has reviewed and approved the project, and in fact, they- And in fact, they made the remark that the new screening for the LES substation, which is in this area, should become the standard for the city because it's the best screening that is done in Lincoln, according to the Urban Design Committee. I'm not sure how willing LES is to raise the bar that high, but we certainly have that suggestion from the Urban Design Committee. Are there questions I can answer for you?
Cindy?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for being here today, Mr. Landis. Um, I wanted to just talk for a minute about this, whatever land the city is selling to the developer. If you could put that map back up and just point that out to me again, I'm sorry.
I actually think I have a map. If you'll give me a moment, maybe you can ask me the question and I can leaf through my pages to find you. Because there is a, a, a special map in which we circled the land.
I like special maps.
And it's leaping out at me even as I look at the pieces we have.
Just a hundred and ninety more pages to go.
Of the longest redevelopment agreement in history.
I didn't, I didn't, um, envy you your task this week. I knew that we gave you a lot of homework.
Thank you.
This is the land that the city owns and will part with. And if you'd like, I wouldn't mind handing you this copy if you'd like to look at it more closely and hand it down to your colleagues.
That section going down through the double red line, that's the trail, is that right?
I think it's a former trail. It's not an existing trail. And I, there are also some sewer lines through this area. We've been at this for about two years. A rather considerable amount of that time is getting to the reality of what's below grade and what are the easements necessary to do it. That's one of the reasons this is as complex as it is. Knowing what in an older area of town is under the ground and what will require easements has itself been a master's thesis. I'm sorry you asked.
So my first question is, once that is sold to the developer, then it will become, um, subject to property tax, right?
It will.
And, and currently it isn't?
Uh, it would, I can't report on every piece of property.
Okay.
The city can own property for which it puts something other than a civic purpose, and then it can become taxable. But I do not know of any land in this area that is other than P or publicly owned land for a civic purpose and therefore not taxed. I think it's fair to say this is untaxed land.
Okay. Can you tell me how much we're selling it for?
One million five hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Thank you.
John?
I think that was a railroad right away for the old Rock Island, if I'm not mistaken. So I'd be surprised if there's anything that was directly into where the tracks were, but maybe parallel to the tracks.
Thank you.
Because it used to go by Muni Pool and all. You had mentioned LES earlier, and that kind of keyed in. In the notes that we had, it, it states that there's about two hundred ninety-one thousand estimated LES expenses or sources of funds. Could you explain what's, uh, that's doing? And I think there's been sort of a change here in recent years on the use of Lincoln Electric's system funding for projects.
We have, they've always been responsible for fencing their own facilities. But we have asked on most visible projects close to areas of high traffic and visibility, that they do more than a chain link fence, for example, with some barbed wire at the top. And in fact, this would be, uh, a drawing of the kind of design that we'll see in the area for LES.
Now, is that what the two hundred ninety-one thousand is going to do?
Yes. Now, there are elements that the developer will be responsible for. The LES isn't going to pay for this signature design element. The developer will be responsible for that. But for the fencing and the like, that's what LES will be providing. And, I mean, this is a substation that needs fencing and needs to be done, and this is the, this is the agreed upon design for the area.
Okay. St. Learyan?
You acknowledged how lengthy and complicated the redevelopment agreement is, so I just wanted to give you the, an opportunity to tell us, is there anything different or not standard or new, novel, unprecedented about this agreement in terms of the, how it's been contracted with the developer? Anything that is typical?
Thank you. I don't know of any that I can report. I think this question would be well placed to Tim C. The elements that I find unique are not in the redevelopment agreement itself. I think they are twofold. First, that this is essentially a neighborhood. We don't do that. This is two hundred housing units, it's commercial space, it's retail space, and then the second of the distinguishing characteristics. And that it has an integrated design running through the entire area.
Okay. And is that city discretion clause included in all of our, our typical redevelopment agreements? I just hadn't noticed it before and I just wanted to ask.
I don't think it's always been there, no.
Here comes Tim.
I wasn't sure what it meant and just wanted to clarify.
Um, can you?
It's on?
Hundred ninety pages. Can you tell me which clause we're talking about?
It's the last clause, one eighty-three, number five, city discretion. It just says the parties acknowledge that this agreement is in, entered into in lieu of the city requiring a performance and payment bond by the developer on the project. The city's decision as to whether a category of improvement has been completed satisfactorily shall be final up to the completion of all private improvements. I assume it's standard? I just thought I would check because.
Yeah, I think that's standard. I think what you're talking about is called a dispersment agreement wherein it's, it's a matter of security for the, the TIF to make sure that the work has actually been completed before we authorize reimbursement of the costs.
Who makes those decisions? Who?
Um, I believe Urban Development has a staff member who reviews the work to see that it's been done and make sure we have the paperwork to document it, including invoices for the work and, um, and then going out and actually visually, uh, signing off that it's been completed.
Okay. Thank you.
Carl?
David, in terms of the housing stock, I mean, what, what kinds of housing would we?
It's not student housing. These are one and two bedrooms and a variety of them. Their market rate. Rental, largely, and, uh, I think there's, I guess you just say, other than the design aspects, they're just a standard development of housing. Now, I'm, I'm sure that they would like to say a little bit more high end than that, but they haven't been described as luxury. They're certainly not the arrangement for what we see in student housing. If there is a target market, it is the proximity of this project to the downtown. This I, I would envision as being deeply influenced by working opportunities. I see this as a workforce housing for the downtown area.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much, sir. Would anyone else like to testify on this, these items?
Good afternoon, Council. My name is Clay Smith, three forty Victory Lane, Lincoln, Nebraska, six eight five two eight. I'm general partner of Speedway Property and a director of EDO LLC. EDO is one of several entities that's been formed as a fifty-fifty partnership between Speedway and Nell Net. And it's been formed to redevelop the Telegraph District, as you've just heard. Unfortunately, Mike Dunlap, chairman of Nell Net, and Terry Hyman, COO of Nell Net are not with us today as they're both attending the funeral of a colleague. But I want to assure you that Mike and Terry are personally dedicated and committed to this project, and their personal commitment has gone to the point that they have been involved in weekly meetings for well over a year on this project. Nell Net and Speedway, we share a common vision. We love Lincoln. This is our hometown. We want to invest here. We want Lincoln to grow and prosper. We're excited to partner with our friends at Nell Net to help transform this largely vacant industrial tract into a vibrant mixed-use downtown neighborhood. We envision an attractive urban setting for people to work, shop, walk, bike and play. The Telegraph District fulfills the vision of the Antelope Valley Development, and it'll be a catalyst for additional development in the surrounding neighborhoods. This name was carefully chosen, as many of you may know, to honor the Woods family and their Lincoln Telephone and Telegraph Company that was at this location for most of its time. And also to honor the employees and, and the leaders of LTNT who have been such a vital part of our community for over a hundred years. For me, though, it's also personal. My grandfather spent his entire year in this, in these buildings. He was a forty-seven-year employee, an engineer with LTNT, and he worked in these very buildings. We want to thank Tom Woods and the Woods family for their support of this project and also all of downtown. The Lincoln Telegraph District has many unique features that we think will make it very interesting to prospective tenants. Scale, it's large enough to have a variety of services available to both living and working. It has great access and visibility bounded by Capital Parkway and O Street, and it also will have some affordable surface parking. It's pedestrian and bike friendly. We're leveraging on the investments that have already been made in the trail system and also the in-street bike path. It actually has a ninety-nine bikability score, which means that it is a biker's paradise. It has these design standards with, which Dave talked about, and it has unique branding, so we hope to create a unique sense of place. But most importantly, it's mixed use. Dense office, residential tenancy, adjacent to restaurants and retail. It's also the downtown urban setting that really draw, drew us to this project, leveraging on the increased demand by all age groups that want to live in and near downtown. We've made great progress already, as you know, as you drive down the Parkway. We've renovated the largest two buildings in LTNT already, the four oh one and the three thirty building. Today, these once vacant buildings now house over a thousand employees. The ALO and Nell Net workforce is the game changer here. Their employment base creates the demand for these neighborhood services and will make the Telegraph District successful. You've heard from Dan and Tamara earlier, you know, the mill was our first tenant. They were pioneers and we are so thankful to them that they had faith in this district. And I'm proud to tell you that this is their number one store and it's grown to be their best location. We also have a local Subway franchisee will be relocating adjacent to the mill this summer. And if you know other pioneers that would like to join us on this venture, we have space available. So I encourage you to have them reach out to us. Creating a shared vision of this with the Urban Development Department has been a long and detailed process, as you've, as you've read over the weekend. But together, we're pleased with the collective vision and plan. And I'd like to thank all the city employees that participated in creating this plan. And finally, I also want to thank each of you for your previous support and your ongoing support of the Telegraph District.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Smith?
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon. My name's Kent Seacrest, who has been honored over a long period of time representing the EDO Acquisition Corporation, which is the redeveloper, who Clay has expressed the background as Speedway Motors and Nell Net. In addition to Clay, we have Ken Fujron and Adam Criswell from Speedway Motors here to answer questions, along with our civil engineer, Tim Gergen from Clark Anderson. Clay said it very well. I, I won't repeat his comments, but we do need some special thank yous. We started meeting with the city May twenty-eighth of two thousand fifteen. So we're almost on the third year. We will beat three years, barely, but we will do it, and we've almost been in weekly meetings. I talk about commitment by the staff, and there were just a lot of issues. It was fun. I got to go back and look at the first agenda I did for that May two thousand fifteen meeting. And we identified thirty issues. And I looked at that list, and not only did those thirty issues get fully discussed, but we probably came up with twenty other things that popped in this area because this was an area that had not had much tender loving care by anybody. This was a very, very, very rough part of the area. And I just want to give some perspective of why it took so long and why we spent so much time on it. This is a map, if it comes up, trying to show you the Telegraph District. And you will see that this Telegraph District in comparison to the West Haymarket. Now, Telegraph District is almost twice the size. Not twice the density. West Haymarket's got more density, but geographical size. So we had plenty of streets, sewer line, water lines, manhole, environmental issues, geotechnical issues, you name it, to go through and to talk about this huge geographical area. And as Clay wisely pointed out, it did start with Antelope Valley. This purple area is the Telegraph District. And with Antelope Valley improvements, we removed the floodplain, and that really started it. And we will create what is urban streetscapes today. Tomorrow, we'll have a whole, whole new sense of place and will be a real game changer to the extent that I think West Haymarket was along the line. You've been great. The staff has been great. You've been patient. You've had six different days of public hearings on this project. This is the second phase. I hope we bother you once again for the third and fourth phases to, because there's even more if we are successful with these first two phases to do along the line. And with that, again, I want to thank the staff for a lot of hard work, and with that, answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Seacrest? Thank you very much, gentlemen. Would anyone else like to testify on these, this, these items?
Good afternoon. My name is Isabel Salis. Do I have to say my name and address and stuff like that? Okay. Living at six six five Sumner Street, so South Hall Creek. I'm also a community builder for the South Downtown Community Development Organization. And so I am here today to speak about the housing need, especially as we give city support to redevelopment projects. So the City of Lincoln's twenty seventeen assessment of fair housing lists a number of goals for, for our housing, I want to say housing crisis that we're undergoing in the City of Lincoln. Notably, goal number one, which is to increase affordable housing options across the city by completing a number of actions listed. And I want to focus on the need for item F under goal one, which proposes that urban development create a proposal that would mandate any project with housing financed by TIF or other public assistance to participate in the Housing Choice voucher program and accept tenants with housing choice vouchers. Considering that the Telegraph District is directly adjacent to one of the most populous dense neighborhoods in the city, I would ask for this item F under goal one to be a priority for the Telegraph District Phase Two Plan, as well as future, and especially future development projects that contain housing. And the reason for this is follows. According to the assessment, as well as firsthand conversations that I've had in my work with groups and individuals such as Region Five, the Lincoln Homeless Coalition, and city staff, the waiting list for receiving a housing choice voucher from Lincoln Housing Authority in the first place is, takes two to three years. And moreover, at any given time, there are about four thousand households that are on the waitlist for housing choice vouchers. So this is a really big need in our city. However, receiving a housing voucher is not always a guarantee that households will be able to use it. The city's assessment goes on to further state that in two thousand fifteen, LHA authorized two thousand nine hundred sixteen vouchers, but only two thousand seven hundred seven were used. So over two hundred vouchers were not used because of the lack of both participating landlords, as well as lack for funding for these housing vouchers. While developments like the Telegraph District Phase Two are adding housing units, there is no guarantee or indication that these housing units will be affordable for low-income populations, much less accepting housing choice vouchers. Our city is experiencing, experiencing a housing crisis in many ways that have been and will be brought up in today's meeting by some of my colleagues. This is just one element of the affordable housing crisis that we can start addressing, especially if these redevelopment projects are receiving city support. And I urge the City Council to reject TIF funds for the Telegraph District Phase Two project and ask that the City Council and other departments add the stipulation that projects receiving TIF funding need to participate in the Housing Choice voucher program and accept tenants with housing choice vouchers so that we may start addressing the affordable housing crisis in the city.
Other questions? Thank you very much. Next testifier? There's a microphone over here, please.
Hi, I'm Amanda Huckins. I live at nine hundred South Fourteenth Street, so in the near south neighborhood. I'm a near south neighborhood association board member and a renter in the area who's concerned about this stuff, so that's why I came to testify. I'm following Isabel, which is really appropriate because I'm going to be talking about the action G in the fair housing assessment, which states the City of Lincoln Urban Development Department will create, for consideration, a proposal in two thousand eighteen which would mandate any project with rental units created with TIF assistance. which would mandate any project with rental units created with TIF assistance to include a percentage of units affordable to low-income persons. So I'm basically asking for the affirmative furthering of fair housing that, the goals of which are stated in the Fair Housing Assessment from last year. I'd like that to be attached to TIF. So I wanted to ask, because I couldn't find it when I was reading through the plans for the redevelopment, the Phase Two of the Telegraph District. I wanted to ask, does the plan currently, under consideration, further the goal of increasing affordable housing options across the city stated in the Fair Housing Assessment? The project is requesting eight point nine million dollars in tax increment financing, as we all know. And according to the redevelopment plan, it will create between one hundred and sixty-eight and two hundred and three multifamily residential units. So I was wondering what percentage of those would be affordable to low-income residents. Specifically, part of a group called Renters Together, and that consists of renters and rentership-supportive homeowners and others who've been expressing concern about the future of affordable housing in our city for several years, based on many different redevelopment projects, which have been large and had a lot of volume, but we're not seeing any of those units affordable. I currently live in an incredibly affordable old house in a very dense neighborhood. And I know that when new development occurs, sometimes property values can rise to the point where the increased property taxes for everyone else who, whose homes aren't covered by TIF reimbursements, we get raises in rent when that happens. And it's, it's, it's difficult to look at one of these large developments and not see that this future is the whole area having a rise in property values, and that can negatively impact vulnerable populations who live around the area in undeveloped housing or, or, you know, housing as it exists now. So I'm asking for TIF funds to be, for this project to be rejected until a affordable housing goal can be met by this project. I'd like to state that any use of TIF funds, in my opinion, as a taxpayer and a resident, should first and foremost benefit the taxpayers in the city, both in the short term and the long term. And if the projects benefit the city and maintain and support the vision and planning goals, then it's worth investing property tax revenues into the development project. If it does not accomplish the city's fair housing goals, it should not qualify for the use of TIF funds. We're very encouraged, Renters Together is encouraged, that the Urban Development Department is working on creating an affordable housing policy for Lincoln. We're excited to collaborate on that much-needed policy. And we're asking you to oppose TIF funds being applied to something that doesn't further the fair housing policy.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Thank you very much.
My name is Grant Daly. I live at six-eleven C Street, and I'm also a resident of Lincoln. I'm a renter and a member of Renters Together as well. I also have concerns with the housing affordability of Phase Two of the Telegraph District. Though the project will occupy a significant portion of Census Tract eighteen, it'll feature housing that'll be largely unaffordable to the current residents. The median household income for Census Tract eighteen is twenty-three thousand two hundred and eighty-nine dollars annually, while the Census Tract seventeen, just to the south of the site, including Lincoln High School, has a median household income of twenty-one thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars annually. These proposed units are clearly unaffordable to the one thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight current residents of Census Tract eighteen and may apply cost pressures that would increase the likelihood of displacement for the five thousand three hundred and fifty-nine residents that live just south of the project site. Within Phase Two of the redevelopment agreement for the Telegraph District, as well as with the Phase One agreement, there has been no provision for affordable housing units. This follows a continued pattern of extensive utilization of TIF for high-dollar living units without affordable housing, but not limited to eleven point six million TIF dollars for Block Fifty-four, an upscale hotel with forty to fifty luxury condos and penthouses, fifteen million TIF dollars for city center with two hundred and thirty-eight high-end apartments ranging from nine hundred to twelve hundred dollars a month, another million dollars possibly to day for twenty residential units with the Raymond Brothers Building. And then this development, eight point nine million dollars for roughly two hundred high-end units with the Phase Two of the Telegraph District, which is totaling to about thirty-six point five million in TIF, going to finance around five hundred high-end units. So unfortunately, Lincoln is a little bit behind the curve in affordable housing policy, and it currently faces a deficit of fifty-six hundred affordable and available rental units. Many of these municipalities throughout the central United States have enacted inclusionary housing policies that apply citywide, apply to a specific redevelopment district, or tied to the use of TIF. For examples of tying TIF to affordable housing requirements, in two thousand one, Madison, Wisconsin, passed an ordinance requiring affordable housing set aside of ten percent for the district-wide increment for residential TIF districts. This policy would allow ten percent of increment for all projects across the development area to go towards funding affordable housing. In Dallas and Houston, twenty percent of all housing receiving TIF funding must be affordable to households at or below eighty percent of the median family income for the city. Other Midwestern cities have affordable housing requirements that apply regardless of TIF. In Jackson, Wyoming, all developments must offer a twenty-five percent ratio of affordable housing to market-rate housing in the cases where it is deemed inequitable or impractical, impractical for the developer to provide this housing in the project area. Certain restrictions, the developer may provide this housing off-site, offer conveyance of land, ensure the affordability of a comparable amount of existing, existing housing, or provide a payment to the city's Affordable Housing Fund in lieu of development requirements. And then other cities, such as Iowa City, apply these housing requirements only to the areas with the greatest risk of displacement. Developments containing ten or more dwelling units on land zoned as a riverfront crossing districts are required to provide affordable housing units in an amount equal to or greater than ten percent of the total number of units. Like with Jackson, the requirement allows some flexibility for developers to meet the requirement off-site through the conveyance of land, through an in-lu fee, given city approval. As the City of Lincoln currently has no such policy, and this redevelopment, along with other recent redevelopment projects, makes use of tax revenue to provide high-end housing units while failing to provide adequate affordable housing, I want to state my opposition to the project. I hope that the city will take an active role in moving forward with affordable housing policy so that the future use of TIF can benefit the city as a whole and address the city's affordable housing needs.
Any questions? Thank you.
Hello. My name is Chelsea Yagenberger. I live at seventeen sixteen B Street in the near-south neighborhood. Thank you for having me. I come before you today in opposition to the Telegraph District Phase Two redevelopment agreement. While this development may benefit the city in some ways, I think it is important to point out where we are failing to meet the city needs and why we must utilize development projects such as the Telegraph District as an opportunity to meet these needs. The Telegraph District is located in a transitional neighborhood. Within blocks of the emerging district, we see that residents are living in substandard rental units, with many paying more than a third of their household income toward their housing. And nearly one in four people pay fifty percent of their income toward rent. Having a development such as the Telegraph District come into the neighborhood could be seen as an improvement and opportunity for the community. However, there is no indication in this agreement that the units built will be affordable. With some of those city's most distressed neighborhoods surrounding Telegraph District, we must wonder, what message is the city sending to the already established neighborhood residents? HUD identifies affordable housing costs to be thirty percent of a household income. Lincoln is already in need of fifty-six thousand available and affordable rental units. At, excuse me, for households at fifty percent or less of the area median income, and that's roughly fifteen to twenty thousand dollars. For someone working a full-time job, making minimum wage, affordable rent would be in the three hundred to four dollar a month range. New units in Lincoln have been going for about six hundred to eight hundred dollars per bedroom, not unit. Many of Lincoln's newest housing developments have been unable to fill units and have had to cut proposed unit rates due to the lack of demand for high-cost, high amenity apartments. And this should be a red flag that we are failing to meet the need of our community. The city's two thousand seventeen analysis of impediments for, to fair housing identifies the location and type of affordable housing and the most common issue identified by residents here in Lincoln. The report's goals reflect that the need to formalize planning for affordable housing in Lincoln. I ask that the city council take action to ensure that TIF is a tool to promote development of affordable units, and I think this should start now by voting against the Telegraph District Phase Two agreement. And there is no doubt that this issue of fair housing has many contributing factors, and TIF is but one tool in the toolbox to address these factors. We need a multifaceted approach to effectively address this, and we have seen the Lincoln Homeless Coalition do amazing work together to address homelessness in Lincoln. And I think a similar collective effort will be needed to address affordable housing across our city. As a community member and through my involvement with Renters Together, I have met a number of dedicated, insightful, and hard-working people who care about this issue and have strengths that can be leveraged in this fight. And I ask that the council remember that many of the tools we need are accessible and that our community members are our greatest asset. And some of you identified affordable housing was an issue that needed to address during the last city council race. And the need is well-understood. However, our ability to effectively respond has not been so clear. So I ask, so as community members stand in front of you today to highlight this concern, I do ask, what will you, as city council members, do to address the need for affordable housing in Lincoln? Thank you.
Questions? Thank you. Please make sure you sign in after you testify.
Hello, I'm Cassie Lotman. I live at thirteen forty F Street in Lincoln, that's near-south neighborhood. I am twenty-three, a two thousand sixteen grad from UNL in the Computer Science Department. I'm a full-time software developer that likes living near downtown, which makes me the perfect target market for these housing units if they had been affordable for all. I and many of my peers, millennials, are interested in living in areas that are diverse in terms of race and income. And it is important to me, when I choose a place to live, to live somewhere that includes people of all income levels, including low-income people. I believe that this diversity makes our city stronger and makes our neighborhood stronger. I'm asking what the community as a whole is getting from this use of TIF, particularly the near-south neighborhood, which, as others have mentioned, will be affected by higher property values that will drive rents up for the current residents. I believe that surely the city should be getting more than just property tax increases from our use of TIF, and we should also be getting more than infrastructure improvements which connect parking lots to streets or provide parking in an area that only needs parking because of the development that just happened. I ask that the city council reject this proposal for the Telegraph District and return it to the Department of Urban Development so that they can renegotiate and find a way to include affordable housing as part of this development project. I believe that it's possible for some of these two hundred new units to include affordable housing while also making it good for the developer and for the city as a whole as well. Do you have any questions?
Questions? Thank you. Anyone else like to testify on this item?
My name is Jewel Rogers. I am a renter in the near-south community, twelfth and E. A lot of my friends, colleagues, et cetera, have expressed their concern about the lack of affordable housing in regards to this development. I, I have a problem with that as well, but more specifically, the use of TIF funds should be able to highlight the benefit of the taxpayer. And as we all know, not all taxpayers are very moneyed. I myself, as, I myself, as, as a daughter, have been very fortunate, but all my life I have lived in a blighted community. All my life I have lived in a substandard community. And I can tell you very forwardly that developments like this do not improve the living conditions of the people in my communities. And so I ask that perhaps there should be some reconsideration in the use of TIF funds in regards to this project, because we are reaching about nine million dollars, and that could give you about ninety small-impact projects in one of the five census tracts that is currently under extreme poverty. And this development is not going to help any of those census tracts. We are already strained to consume. So providing more opportunities for us to consume is not going to help our access to opportunity. We are very much in need of things remaining affordable. And anything that may put that in danger, I, I am inclined to be in opposition of. So I hope that perhaps you may be consider that. Using TIF funding to improve the lives of the people living in the blighted communities that TIF funding should go to.
Thank you. Questions?
No. Ma'am, what, what did you say your address is, please?
Twelve oh one E Street, Apartment Three. I live right next to Casey's.
Thank you. Thank you. Would anyone else like to testify on this, these items? Would staff care for a brief rebuttal?
We have questions, staff.
Staff questions?
I don't think rebuttal is quite the right word, in that I think the testifiers have highlighted a phenomenon that is true. Lincoln has, as many urban cities, but Lincoln has an affordable housing problem. We have too few units that are within the means of low-income people, and it produces people living in density and people with crowding into one facility to make it affordable to the family. The second part that I would not rebut, and I would agree with, in fact, our research says the same thing, is that there are a number of cities around the United States who either, through the use of some form of city subsidy, whether it's TIF or something else, or whether there is no subsidy involved, but simply the developer is responsible, are obligated under law to provide a portion of their units for affordable standards. It's not uniform, but it's not unheard of, and it is, it, it might be more common than what you might think. It is a phenomenon that exists in a number of cities. It doesn't exist in the City of Lincoln, and it's a, it's an, I would anticipate, given this commentary, and also the fact that it appears in the list of goals that we've identified for the Fair Housing Project, that it be a, a topic under consideration. So I, I, I'm not here to rebut that, those issues at all. I would affirm the idea that there is a considerable need, and I would affirm that there are elements in other cities' toolboxes that we have not made use of. Other questions?
John?
Appreciate your comments, Mr. Landis, and I would agree overall. When I look at the proposals these last three years, as Mr. Seacrest talked about on the Telegraph District and what they're doing, one of the elements that's been present is an absence. Virtually nothing there, and whether it be housing, commercial, or anything. So there's an economic base that is lacking for stability and the ability to create what you're proposing in this Papa George and the, the plans for the community there. So with that in mind, do you have some observations on how this can be a factor or a project that would help, you know, for example, north of this area, we have Neighbor Works that has been adding a number of units, and, you know, your department has been very helpful in that regard, working with Neighbor Works and other civic minded organizations. Perhaps talk about some of the efforts we are making and how, as an area like this takes that urban blight out, that it may be, you know, very helpful.
Let me make a comment about this project specifically first. It does not take down any existing housing. So it's not a case of gentrification in which older and low-income and affordable housing is bought up. And then now there have been projects that have done that, but this is not one.
I don't think there's been one residence here.
What's that?
I don't believe it.
I don't know of any.
It's just like I said earlier, an absence of anything.
That's right. I don't know of any area in this project. But you could have a project where it could occur, so I'm not saying that that doesn't, you know, it isn't possible, it is possible. When the Assurity Building was built, a number of voluntary, in fact, all of them were voluntary purchases, people sold their land, sold their houses, took those proceeds and went someplace else, and then we got the Assurity Insurance Company. But those were all between willing buyers and willing sellers. We do not have a mechanism that would address the magnitude of the problem that we have in affordable housing as, as we are now currently configured. The elements that we have, if they were repurposed, of the tools that we have, if they were repurposed, would be very modest, make a modest impact. I'll give you a couple of examples. I'll give you a couple of examples. We do get two million dollars a year in money from the federal government, and we do use that money for affordable housing, but what we don't do with it is to expand the number of affordable housing units. We don't create new affordable housing with that money. What we do is we take dilapidated and deteriorated structures and refurbish them and give them more life. So we'll take a house that has five years of future before the red tag comes and push that frontier off by twenty years. But that doesn't add to the supply of affordable housing. It maintains an existing profile which is too small. The limited resources that the city has, if you were to add resources, would be the turnback tax that's been created because of the West Hay Market, and about two hundred thousand dollars of that is available for affordable housing. On the other hand, the cost of building a code-worthy structure, we would not probably be able to get two units a year of those resources, which would mean, it would be a sentiment, but by no means moving the, the, you know, the dial. If there was something that that money could be used for, and if we were bandying ideas about, it would be this. There, there is money dedicated to the, to low-income housing in this city, and it comes from the federal government, and it goes to the Lincoln Housing Authority that struggles and has the waitlist that was described accurately by the folks that are here. One of the wrinkles of that is that one of the forms of housing they support is Section Eight housing, a voucher, that you give the landlord, assuring that they will be paid. We have more vouchers than we have landlords who will use them. In other words, we have people who have vouchers, but they can't find a landlord that's willing to undertake the use of that voucher. One of the things that one could do is to take that turnback tax and create some kind of an incentive for the landlords to turn what is now a no into a yes. Imagine that you could do that for, let's say, and I don't know the number of housing units or housing vouchers that are not being used, but let's say that with a thousand dollars of that money, you could turn two hundred landlords into yeses. Now you'd be making a modest contribution, given the size of the problem, but much more significant than if that resource, those resources were spent towards this. Affordable housing has this problem to it. To create a livable, good, healthy, safe, clean house costs more money than what, the eighty percent, or more, more problematically, the fifty percent of average-income person. Their, that portion of their well-being doesn't translate to a hundred and eighty thousand-dollar house, and it doesn't translate to a hundred and sixty thousand or a hundred and fifty thousand a unit. That rent won't cover that amount of new building, which means that for affordable housing to expand, there needs to be a subsidy. The difference between what the renter can pay and what the landlord needs to recover the cost of construction, and that gap is significant. We have two tools in this state for that, two and a half. First is the federal money from Housing and Urban Development, and secondly is the money from the Nebraska Investment Finance Authority, NIFA. Those are sources of money that will subsidize the construction of houses designed for affordable housing. There isn't one that we control with our funds for the construction of affordable housing, and our resources are, are currently allocated for housing, but not in the sense of expanding the supply, which is why the, the argument that's being made here in other jurisdictions has been a very serious conversation between the development community, who have oftentimes resisted, and the activist community who wants attempts to use a, a government tool to provide that, that subsidy. And I think one could translate, what's being suggested here is, some portion of TIF should be used to support developments in which there would be an obligation to create affordable housing, to get at the problem. And in the end, that would be something that we would do, I assume, by ordinance. I think you would give instruction. I think between the administration, the public, and the city council, you'd do that. I would suggest, I think, that you would want to do that on a going-forward basis once the rules were argued, debated, negotiated, and passed.
Jane?
Well, Dave, I don't know if this is a question you can answer, but certainly the developer can. In, in many municipalities, they look at new urbanism, which is a healthy mix of subsidized, affordable, market-rate, and maybe even high-end housing in many of the developments, and, and sometimes it just doesn't fit in the business model, but perhaps a developer could come forward and address, you know, was that under their consideration when they were reviewing this project and designing this project, and, and some of the reasons that they chose not to consider a, a mix of that nature?
Thus endeth the rebuttal.
Hi, Clay Smith. We did consider that when we went through the analysis. We do not, we have a lot of rental units across the city, and of those units, none of them have vouchers in them. But I would say that many of them qualify for affordable housing if a rent might be in the two hundred to four hundred and fifty-dollar range. I have apartments in Belmont, Havelock, Midtown, Near South, that are in the two fifty to four hundred and fifty-dollar range. And so we've been able to take buildings and improve them and make really nice living units for our, our partners, our tenants, in those spaces. We previously, this was probably a year and a half ago, tried to partner with the Hay Market Development Corporation to build another building in the Hay Market owned by the Hay Market Development Corporation. They've had a very successful model in the Hay Market. It started at a time when the buildings had very little value. There were very few choices for those buildings, and they created great housing, some of it affordable, some of it market-rate, down in the Hay Market. Unfortunately, the proposed project that we had was not approved, and therefore it didn't go forward. So we considered it in this project. Part of the challenge is, as David alluded to, is that construction prices are going up dramatically, and so part of the challenge we had with this project is so much of the TIF is being deployed into the right-of-way. We're redoing Twenty-first Street. We're taking out water and sewer lines and repositioning them. We're putting in new drivelanes and new street scape, and all of that's in the public right-of-way. We actually have more uses than we have sources for the TIF, and the uses are in the public right-of-way. So this is a really unusual project, given its scope, that there really aren't surplus TIF funds out there that are being used for the developers' facades or other things. It really is a completely challenging situation, given that we have so much infrastructure to build.
It was pointed out that there is no displacement here. There is no residential in this area, hasn't been, would not be a very desirable place if you had been in this area. This is an industrial area. We are talking about creation of workforce housing. This is not high-end housing that we are talking about. And more importantly, early on in this process, I reached out to Lincoln Housing Authority to say, is this a good site? Is this where you want it? And the answer was no. They'd rather scatter, as was the word, I think I remember hearing, rather than concentrate. So that was one of the issues, so we did not get any warm feelings that there was, that going to be any Lincoln Housing Authority vouchers available for this type of development. We also need to look at jobs. Housing is very, very important, but the goal of low-income people is not to stay at low income, but to rise, and getting them better jobs, and this is what I think we're doing, is we're creating a new employment area that's real close so people can walk in the affordable neighborhoods to new job opportunities that we're creating in this area along the way. And as Clay pointed out, we have no infrastructure to say, if you look at typical neighborhood, twenty-five percent is the street, the sidewalks. The other seventy-five percent's the private sector. When you look at our twenty-five percent, there's not much there. We are rebuilding it from scratch, and that makes it extra stressful and extra risky, to say the least. This is a high-risk project that the developers are undertaking, and already, under the uses and sources, they're underwater by eight hundred thousand, meaning they're funding public improvements that could, would, should be funded by TIF, but there's just simply not enough TIF. With that, we'd be glad to try to answer further questions.
Jane?
We know going forward, since, can't you represent a lot of the development community, and the Smith family does a lot of great developments throughout the city? I've seen other municipalities, if they, with the use of TIF, then they might do an off-site housing credit at another location or throughout the city, not necessarily if it doesn't make economic sense at this, this, this exact location. Is that something that the development community would look into or consider? I, I mean, there's been so many great projects going on throughout the entire city, and healthy neighborhoods thrive on, on-
Well, you're trying to expand this discussion beyond this development-
No, but going forward, yeah.
Well, that's what I mean, you're trying to expand it beyond what the scope of this discussion is.
Well, I think Dave mentioned that, going forward, as a project going forward, I'm pretty sure-
Well, we're not going to solve all those issues here-
I agree.
-right now, and so unless there are questions that are specific to this project, we're going to close the hearing.
Yeah, well, you know, you make excellent point. We're not here on rebuttal either. The issues are real. The community issues are real. I think David said it best, if you're going to address this, it needs to be done in a comprehensive, city-wide, public process, public hearing, and not try to create the policy on one redevelopment project.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right. Next item, please.
All right, next is item five D, approving a lease agreement between the city and Roberts' Family Nineteen Eighty-Four Trust for a lease for a three-year term for use by the Lincoln Police Department Northwest Team for a substation at thirty-two twenty North Fourteenth Street.
Good afternoon, Jeff Blymeister, Chief of Police. This has been a negotiation for approximately a year. As many of you recall, in 2016, we had several tragedies that occurred in the Belmont, Portia, Knox area, and following that, we had community input, asking us for a presence in a substation, and we began that particular process, and I want to thank Mr. Roberts, who has come forward and offered to be our partner in this endeavor at a no cost to the city of Lincoln. So I can answer any questions that you may have.
Carl?
Yes, thanks, Chief, and also thanks to Captain Butler, the Northwest Team, who has been engaged, well, for years, but, but in the events of 2016, certainly very engaged with the community, at that time starting to talk about the need for a, a physical presence in that neighborhood, and just, just working to try to find some way to, to make that happen. This is a great thing. Thank you.
I would agree, and another thing that it does do is that it will allow us, we're hoping, to improve our response times to the North Twenty-seventh Street corridor all the way up to Interstate eighty, where we have significant calls for service and oftentimes is an area where we struggle to meet those responses.
Right. Okay. Cindy?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Chief. Thanks for being here. That's okay. I just had a couple of quick questions. So I love that the Roberts Family Trust is willing to partner with us on this, and I did see, though, that, that we're referred to as the tenant and that we would make improvements for the benefit of the, of the owner, and I just wondered if there are any specific expectations, because I didn't find that anywhere in the agreement.
No specific expectations, other than to make it a workable place for our officers to go to complete reports, and just to have that enhanced presence when they're traveling from one call for service to the next. And those, those renovations are going to be done, the labor's going to be done by members of the Northwest Team, so Captain Butler's crew, and it will be low-cost dollars to the material costs itself.
Okay, mostly keep it in good repair and make sure we're not ripping out any walls that we're not supposed to rip out.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, John?
Yes, thank you, Chief. Would you compare and contrast this to the North Twenty-seventh and Holdridge? I mean, when we talk about substation, this sounds like more of a, like you were mentioning a moment ago, an area to congregate or something in between calls or something like, and we've had some, something like that elsewhere in the city, and I think we still do.
We do. We said, we have several ones. One that stands out is at Union College, where we have a partnership with them. This is not a standalone substation or police station as exists at Twenty-seventh and Holdridge on Huntington and will exist in deep southeast at sixty-six oh-one Pine Lake. It is merely another locale for the Northwest Team to be able to complete reports, respond in an expeditious fashion, and also have just that presence, the marked units parked in the parking lot in a very, very visible place at Fourteenth and Adams on the northeast corner.
Thank you.
And use the restroom, right? It's two, it's two rooms and a restroom, is that what, yeah?
That is correct.
It's important.
It is.
Okay, Benny, Annie? All right, thank you very much, sir. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item.
All right, if not, that concludes our public hearing. We can move into the voting session. Ordinance says third reading, item six A, adopting the supplements to Lincoln Municipal Code dated June twenty seventeen and December twenty seventeen as part of the official Lincoln Municipal Code introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Carl. Discussion, please call the roll.
Gaylor Beard?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item six B is amending ordinance two zero two six one, approved October twenty-sixth, two thousand fifteen, as amended by ordinance two zero four zero seven on December nineteenth, two thousand sixteen, authorizing tax allocation bonds for the Victory Park VA Campus redevelopment project by limiting the area from which property taxes may be by, may be diverted to the specific project area with which that bond series is associated, introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second?
Moved by John, seconded by Carl. Discussion, please call the roll.
Gaylor Beard?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
We adjourned.